Okay, it's five past six. I want to call this meeting of the select board, January 16th. Order. And first thing is Matthew Driscoll for planning commission to do. One up.
Do you want to make another podium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, no, you're not. Sorry.
Talk a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
Sure. So my name is Matt Driscoll, relatively recent move to Woodstock. Live on Pleasant Street with my wife and two daughters who are two years old and six months old, two and a half and six months old. We moved from Barnard in April. And yet we're very interested in joining the planning commission. I think we're full time residents of Woodstock. We have a vested interest in seeing the town continue to sort of develop in a way that maintains its character, but you have the ability to walk to stuff in the village. There's sort of an economically viable village center. So I'm excited about spending some time on it because it's very relevant to our life in town.
Have you been to any meetings?
I haven't been to a planning commission meeting. I'm planning to go tomorrow. I have been to two design review board meetings for my own home and I've spent some time with Laura and a few other folks.
Our meeting was re-scheduled, so he would have been here. He would have been.
Can you make all the meetings?
I should be able to make the majority of meetings. I travel a bit for work, but not so much that. It would.
Any other questions? Any board members have questions? Harry?
Stephen, do you? Did you have a question?
I just had one. We just have one vacancy and one applicant. Is that right?
I, Matthew was appointed approved by the trustees last week. If he's appointed by the select board, there'll still be one more opening after this.
Anthea, who had previously come before us, has withdrawn her application and candidacy because she had scheduling conflicts. So that's like Eric said, Matt would be filling one of the two vacancies.
I move we appoint Matthew Driscoll to the planning commission.
Your second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, next is we're going to an exec executive session to discover a lawsuit pending a probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body may or may not be party. So at this point, we will go into executive motion.
I would move we go into executive session as you just set forth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay. Folks, if you don't mind, you know.
All right, Nikki's gonna break us out.
Yeah, Nikki, put us a breakout, breakout room.
Look at the door. Back. Next is additions and deletions on the posted agenda.
I have an addition under other business if we have time. We did all did our planning commission interview, but I was going to ask the board and Stephen left for an appointment, a special appointment to the planning commission as an ex officio non-voting member in accordance with our planning commission bylaws for myself as I resigned as a voting member as of December. So that'd be under J.
And we're gonna delete discussion number seven, update on the on farm restaurant amendment planning zoning.
Yells? Citizens comments.
So I know you probably can't say very much about this. There's one here. Oh, my name's Roger Logan. I live in Woodstock Village and Town, I guess officially. I know you probably can't say much about this lawsuit that you were talking about, but can you? Can you say whether the town has been named as a party to this lawsuit?
I would say we've got no comment on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to say something that you guys are not allowed to say, I'm sure. At some point when you're comfortable, if it's legally possible, I think it would be a good idea for the select board to make a statement in support of the development review board's position. And again, I don't know if you're allowed to or not, and I would have to be much more much more diplomatic than I would be if I was making such a statement. You know, we can't continue to. We can't do anything if one person can stop anything. And it's so, so I would just suggest that when and if it's possible that the select board make a statement in support of the development review board. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is, this is Tom.
Tom, we lost you.
You broke up.
Yeah, this is Tom Ayers at the Vermont Standard and following up on Roger's comments, I'd just like to ask why an executive session was held at the very outset of the meeting as opposed to at the end of the meeting when they're customarily heard thereby, you know, basically excluding the media and all of the people in attendance in person and on Zoom for about the last 10 or 15 minutes. Is there any reason why this had to be item number two on the agenda as opposed to the end of the agenda when executive sessions are more customarily held?
Oh, it's a decision we made based on the way we run the format agenda for tonight's.
Right, right. But 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 based on what, Eric?
Just the way we want to have a discussion if we had to have a public discussion after the executive, executive session.
Okay. Roger seems to to have some information that suggests that this is about a TDRB decision. Can you verify whether that is, if information is accurate or not?
Not at this, not at this point, Tom. And if you want to, I think, ask me more questions, I'm happy to have a discussion with you offline about this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public was fully aware of what the situation is here. Thank you, Eric.
Yep. Can I just clarify something? Yeah.
I just want to clarify. I'm Roger again. I just want to clarify, I have not received any information from anyone on the select board or in town government about what this suit is. I was making an assumption which may or may not be correct.
Okay. Thank you, Roger.
Okay. Moving on, manager's report.
I'll be very brief tonight. One is we've moved some offices in Town Hall. So if anyone comes in, we're still working on signage, but some offices haven't moved around. So if you are confused when you come here, just ask us. We're happy to help. Second, we have a DPW crews out again tonight after being out all weekend, after being out the weekend before, after being out the weekend before that, after the flood this summer. So they're doing the best. I asked everyone to have patience on the road as they try to clear as much as they can. It's a lot of snow the last few weeks and they're doing the best they can. If you have any issues, please call my office and we're happy to help you via the public channels.
Financial report.
So if there's a whole lot of kind of sent out, a few board members had questions, hopefully I answered ahead of time. I'm happy to answer any questions now. Anyone have anything?
Anyone?
I do have a question on the financial reports. I didn't know if going forward, the select board wants to get the financial reports on the agenda. I can also have it emailed out monthly and we have a quarterly financial report updated on the agenda. I didn't know if the select board are feeling the way or the other.
I think. So they, I'm sorry, they would just be emailed to us, but not on the agenda, so not made public?
They'd be made maybe every quarter, we'd have a financial report. I can email to the boards a monthly report and obviously any resident who wanted them and asked them and received them as open information. It just seems not that many questions usually publicly about them, so a way to create some of the items.
We have three people from the public here. I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that everybody feels that they're being provided with information. So does that sound? If you've got the financial statements quarterly rather than monthly, but you could come in and get them if you wanted, does that meet your needs or should we keep doing what we're doing? I'm looking at you, Roger.
Okay.
Susan's knitting and.
Maybe you should get a lapel mic or something. I would like to see monthly financial reports put on the website somewhere. I think it makes sense what Eric is saying, since you generally don't have lots of questions and what questions you may have are probably going to be in super detail, so it may not be the best use of your time in a meeting. But I would like to see information, a lot more information posted on the website with metrics and data and et cetera. So that, but but as a, as an agenda for the meeting, it certainly makes sense to me.
We post it?
We can try a website. We don't have the best website in the world, so we can see what we can do. Or email people as, you know.
I mean, the financial reports are online already within the packet.
That's right. But if.
Yeah, then it'll only be quarterly.
Right.
Yeah.
Difference.
We need a motion or just?
No, it's just on there because it's always been on there. So we need a motion to sign legally required to be on there, as I know.
Now we have the wastewater treatment plant, they on?
They're here.
They're here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you looked familiar.
See? Great.
Standing here.
I think.
You want us over here? You sit wherever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll come for you to sit down and Nikki, let me share my screen, please.
Yep, you should be able to.
Oh, great. That's, that's good because I do have a couple of slides to click through. Okay, you want me to? Great. Yeah, so just to introduce myself, I'm John Owen with Royal Tanner Associates. I'm the regional manager out of our Vermont office. And with me today is Kirsten Warden. You want me to introduce?
Kirsten D. Peter Warden, senior environmental engineer with Royal Tanner.
Technical lead of the study. So we just completed the preliminary engineering report for the Woodstock main wastewater treatment facility this past year. Eric had asked us to come back in and just give a, give an update about what our findings were, where the existing plant is at and talk about a little bit about the next steps to keep the project moving forward. So this is going to be a short presentation and then we'll open up for questions at the end. So I'll just kind of click through and there we go. So right here, project location, pretty, pretty self-explanatory for, I'm sure everybody in the select board, if anyone in public isn't aware just off adjacent to the Attic River there. Kind of north coming out of town there. And background, where the plant's at. So it was originally constructed in 1968 with a berm, flood berm and de-watering pump station added in 1973. Additional plant, very clarified, talk a little bit more about the process and what the, what the different meanings of these components are. And the process building 1982, 1988 had the sludge storage tank addition and another one in 1998 as well as the blower building. There were headworks improvements made in 2006 and then the facility, which brings us to today where we're proposing some facility upgrades and kind of point out that 1998, that was the last time a major upgrade was done where a lot of the equipment was replaced or refurbished. So this is typical, let's say, and about 20 to 30 years, 20 years being right about where the equipment starts to run out its end of life. And, and we're, we're past that now since 1998. Let Kirsten.
So flow enters, hard to see on this. Okay, there we go. There's the influencer enters into your headworks building and a headworks building is where we have screening and grit removal, screening to get out the big pieces of what we affectionately call rags in the wastewater industry, but it's getting out a lot of the the paper and junk that's coming down your sewer line. There's also grit removal in that, in that building, in that phase, and the importance of grit, grit, getting grit out of the, out of the stream is that it protects the downstream equipment such as pumps and wear and tear on equipment. From there it goes into the aeration tanks and that's, that is labeled as aeration and digestion tank. It's a very unique packaged tank. And this is, this is an old steel tank with steel interior walls and in the center of it is a an interior tank that is used for holding wasted sludge from the, from the clarifiers. This, this particular piece of, this particular structure is in very bad shape right now. So that is the biological process goes into there, it's aerated. From there it flows to the clarifiers. Clarifiers are a solid separation process where you slow down the, you slow down the flow and you let the, the sledge, heavy sledge kind of settle down to the bottom. That is then pumped out and that is what's sent back to the interior, the interior tank or that's inside of the aeration in circle. From the clarifiers, clarified effluent, which is nice and clear, okay, flows into the chlorine contact tank where it is dosed with sodium hypochlorite. And it travels through a set of serpentine channels for its detention time and effective disinfection and then it is discharged to the Otis River. There's also what you see up there called a de-watering pump station. When the river elevations are high, so back in the seventies, the Army Corps engineer built a berm around the plant to protect it from flooding from the Otis, but when the Otis level is high, it is required or it is necessary to boost effluent flows up above that level. And that, that's exactly what that plant does. It's all hydraulics. It kind of jumps over a weir from the chlorine contact tank, goes into the de-watering pump station and then there's one pump in there from the seventies that boosts flow over. And I know that they use this not necessarily for flooding events right now, but when there's ice jams also on the river and they need to get the flow up to a higher level. Also, you'll see there's an operations building. There are the two storage tanks. So this, this facility wastes sludge from the middle of that aeration digestion tank. From there it is pumped into these two storage tanks. The facilities hold sledge there and only dewater, contract dewaters that they have a, an outside contractor come in, Paul Santasak, and he dewaters the sledge. He does that twice a year. So they're able to hold their sledge for six months before de-watering. The generator and blower room provides backup power to the plant. The blower room provides air to those large storage tanks. And then there's a garage, maintenance garage on the far end of the site. So that's what's existing right now. I wanted to talk about historical flows. The plant is currently running at about 50% capacity. It's designed for a point four or five million, sorry, let's call it a point four or five million gallons per day or 450,000 gallons per day. And that's that red line that goes across the top. Currently it's averaging about half of that, a point, about point two two four million gallons a day, and that is the blue line. Okay. What we have seen happen is that the plan is starting to peak well above its design peak hourly flow. The design peak hourly flow is about, is, well, it's not about, it is point seven five million gallons per day and it has peaked over that at point eight or six. That's just significant because as you move towards into design, you have to look at these peaking factors that happen when you're in a rain event and use that peaking factor which ended up being a three, 3.8 peaking factor to then come up with what your designed peak hourly flow should be through the plant. You have to design your infrastructure for that. You have to be able to pump it. This plant has pumping from the influence up to its, so if you can't pump that, you're going to flood It's also important because for disinfection, you need to be able to disinfect that peak hourly flow. A lot of the other processes you only design to an average day flow because you're able to kind of dampen out the, the aeration requirements for, for a biological system, but disinfection has to, has to be designed to a peak hourly flow before it can be discharged. So having said that, there are a whole bunch of processes at this plant that do not meet that treatment at the peak hourly flow. So just want to. So starting with the headworks, the headworks is one of the areas that does not, is not able to pass. Is not rated for that peak area. The slide's hard to see the chart on the side, but effectively we went through and did a condition assessment of all the pieces of equipment in the headworks and you can see a lot of it is at the end of its useful life. A headworks is extremely corrosive environment. You have hydrogen sulfide gases that come in from the influencer. It corrodes metal conduits that the electricals you know, being held up, paint, everything is, is essentially starting to fall apart inside the headworks. The aeration tank, as I mentioned before, is a steel tank. It is. It has holes in some of the interior walls and support beams that pulled up those walls to the point where the operator isn't 100% certain he can take one side down for cleaning without a catastrophic failure of those walls. Clarifier tanks are, all of the interior metal components are are at the end of their useful life and there are some concrete repair concerns in those tanks. And we'll just show you a couple.
Pictures.
Pictures. So that is the corrosion on the left side. That is the corrosion in that center wall and beam that holds up a steel wall down below between the two sides of the aeration tank. There's two trains. And then that's just a picture of some of the concrete defects that we've observed. There's a significant amount of concrete work.
So to, to what Kirsten was saying on that steel channel that's clearly corroded on the left picture, that, what you were saying before, if you needed to lower down one of the aeration, one of the vestibules or the tanks down on one side, that would create when the wall would be out of, like you'd have a force on one side of the hydraulics pushing up against the wall. So when it's in equilibrium, when it's filled on both sides, it's, it's okay. But if you were to need to do maintenance, that's where the critical risk is.
And the maintenance that needs to happen is there's aeration diffusers at the bottom of the tank that are important to impart dissolved oxygen into the liquid. That's, that is the whole part of a biological, of the aeration tanks. You're pumping air in, it helps to degrade nitrogen, helps to degrade biological oxygen demand, and that's where your treatment's happening. Without oxygen, you will not get, you will not meet permit, you will not meet permit requirements. A couple more pictures. That's the interior of the, one of the clarifiers that is drawn down right now. And the more, the more pictures of just the tank concrete. It's falling. The chlorine contact tank does, so the issues with the chlorine contact tank are that it does not meet the state standards of disinfection. You need 30 minutes of detention time at the peak hourly flow and it does not meet that currently. The other major deficiency with the chlorine contact tank is that it is below the I, I know it's below the 500 year flood elevation, which is a new requirement for the state of Vermont. So as I just mentioned, aging infrastructure, we have an aging headworks, we have aging influence pumps. The the aeration tank itself is in need of being replaced completely. The clarifiers need internal components and the chlorine contact tank needs to be redesigned. So that's, those are, those are the needs. There are other ancillary equipment, you know, waste, wasting pumps, blowers for those aeration, those big sludge storage tanks. They're old, they're inefficient. The technology has come a long way since that equipment was installed that would lower, lower the energy cost. Most of this equipment, like a narration tank blowers, the sludge holding tank blowers, they're on 24/7. They're on all the time. So there's a lot of improvements that can be made from an energy efficiency point of view to, to different areas of the plant.
Nice.
Okay, so our proposal is to, we're going to start with, our proposal is to redo the headworks completely with a new headworks building that's off to the side so that it could be built, constructed while the plant, one of the tricky things about proposing an upgrade to a plant is keeping the existing plant operational while you're building a new plant because you can't, you can't not meet your effluent requirement. So we propose building a new headworks right next to it. We'll bring, bring the flow in from the influence sewer. That headworks will have new screening and grit removal. From there will flow into the intermediate pump station. We're going to reuse the existing wet well, replace the pumps with pumps that are rated to pass that peak, that, that new peak hydraulic flow, hourly flow. From there, we're proposing to build new aeration tanks. This biological process, we're proposing a anoxic oxic. So anoxic is in the absence of oxygen. So this is the first stage and then you flow into an aeration stage where you're imparting dissolved oxygen into the liquid. That is the process that you'd want to use to meet your nitrogen limits that you, that this plant has to discharge to the Otis. So it's a, it's a favorable environment for having nitrogen consumed by the, by the biology, the microbiome, the bugs in the wastewater. Let me just put it that way. It gives us flexibility to have a recycle line, a nitrate recycle line internally. So there's be flexibility to change the, the biological process to be more enhanced nitrogen removal or for phosphorus removal. So we're looking at different flexibilities with recycle lines in there. So basically anoxic to aeration, oxic to the clarifiers that are there, reusing those existing tankage, but replacing all the internal parts. From there, we'll, we're going to demolish the demolish the existing aeration tank after we've built the new tanks. Then we'll go to a new UV disinfection building. And we propose that you get a, get away from chemical disinfection. The chemicals that are involved for disinfection, sodium hypochlorate and sodium bisulfate, you have to chlorinate and then you have to dechlorinate so that you aren't poisoning the river and the fish, the aquatic life in the Otis River. They're nasty chemicals. Everything in those rooms corrode. They're hazardous for your operators to use. And so we are proposing that you change from that to a ultraviolet disinfection. These are lamps, if you will, and they sit in a channel and it's a wavelength that can kill the, the RNA and DNA of bacteria. And they're used all across the state of Vermont. It's a very common, your South Woodstock plant has a UV disinfection process. By demolishing the existing aeration tank in the middle gives us room for in the future if we need to build a third clarifier. It flows to the plant increase over time. There's room for a clarifier there. The other thing that it gives us some real estate for is for a potential, a future filtration building if if the state of Vermont imposes a total phosphorus effluent limitation on the plant, which is most likely going to happen in the next permit round.
And what would that permit round be?
I believe your permit is up in 2025. It, the plant may be able to, with a new process, the plant may be able to meet a total phosphorus limitation if it's around, if it's a point eight milligram per liter pretty easily, some chemical addition. But if it's any lower than a point eight milligram per liter, fire a tertiary. But if it's any lower than a point eight milligram per liter, we require a tertiary, we call third tertiary process, which is a filtration. Type process. And very commonly in the state of Vermont is, uh, like a cloth media filtration process. You think of it as a coffee filter. You're putting.
Like a cheese cloth?
Yeah. Okay, exactly. You're putting and you use, and you'll, you'll use some kind of, um, coagulant, like a metal salt, like an aluminum sulfate. That helps, um, it helps bind the solids and the phosphorus, the parts that can be chemically bound. They're soluble and there's particulate. So the parts that can be chemically bound into a larger flock that can then be separated out of. Waste stream. So that gives you flexibility for the future. Um, and then the last part of our proposal is to redo that. That drainage pump station. Like I said before, it has one pump that dates back to the seventies. If that were to fail during a, during a flooding event. That the whole, the whole place would, the whole inside would fill up. Um, we also propose some upgrades to the operations building, things like, um, the lab. I mean, the operators are eating their lunch in the lab. That's, that's not sanitary right now. So having a dedicated office and lab space. Um, I believe some new windows, just some energy efficiency improvements to the building. Um, we're looking at replacing the, the aeration system inside of the sledge holding tanks. Those are diffusers. There's other mixing opportunities as well that are, that are energy efficient. So we, we could look at different alternatives during, uh. During final design for that and to replace the blowers that feed those two, um, those two sledge holding tanks.
Yes, question?
Yes.
So there's currently no filtration tank proposal yet.
No, correct.
But we're pretty sure in twenty twenty-five it'll become mandatory.
Yes, and it depends on what that limit is. It could very likely be met with, um, chemical addition. At this stage. Typically, if you're given a, a new limitation in your permit, you are also given a compliance schedule. Saying you have so many months to design it and then implement, construct it. So it wouldn't be like day one.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-five, like, oh, you need to meet this limitation.
Total cost of everything that Kirsten just went through, you know, just given approximately. Important question to keep in the back of our minds all times is between twenty and twenty-five million dollars.
Then today's money or twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
That's actually got a, it, it, a slight, it, it's projected for bidding in April twenty-seven. Okay, yeah, there's, I didn't. Okay, and, uh, quickly going through the schedule where we're at, um, you know, step one, preliminary engineering reports being completed. And where this is the start of it, I think this would be the, what we would consider this early part of public outreach. So. Um, as we move through two thousand twenty-four, um, the next really phase for the project, the next key milestone. Is getting a bond vote. Um, you'll need a bond vote to advance with funding programs. Um, CWSRF is the main funder at this point on the project, uh, that we've been working with, that Eric, we just submitted a, uh. Uh, priority project list application, a PPL, uh, so that. That, that third bullet down, the funding agency coordination and application. So that's, that's the other part of it. So over the course of this year. Obviously this is a large expense for the town to incur. So we're going to look to offset mitigate it the best, is that's possible out there. Uh, with the reality that some of this stuff, it, it can't be avoided. Um, it's at, it's at the age, it's at the end of the useful life. So, uh, we're going to work with you to do the best we can, but there'll be more public outreach. This is, like I said, this is a start. This is just kind of a. Round one where we're at. Um, and we've talked to Eric and town about some other opportunities coming up through the summer to get people engaged with the project. Uh, but moving towards that potential vote in November twenty twenty-four, one of the benefits of doing it then is. That'll be a presidential election. So you're going to get good turnout. Uh, so we like to try to get these things right into that. Um, and then the next step would be final design and permitting, um, mostly occurring after November twenty twenty-four. But we, there are some services that could get started in the summer, like survey, uh, the field services. Because if you're going to start in November after the bond vote, you want to get some of those moving along to keep the project on schedule. It takes a while. So to get through final design and permitting, eighteen months, that puts you at May of twenty twenty-six. Um, so step three begins, uh, at its earliest, and I think we just mentioned twenty twenty-seven, but at its earliest. Would be May of twenty twenty-six, um, for completion, a two-year, two-year construction window completion, October twenty-eight. Now, all that said, these are rough dates. So anybody, um, we'll have our new plant in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, select board knows that this is assuming a lot of things, assuming some of these key milestones.
I have a question. So you want us to vote on a bond. With an estimate. And then the bid comes in. And we're really short.
You want that estimate to be secure.
The state of Vermont, the clean water, uh, state revolving fund loan requires a successful bond vote before. You can, um, go for a construction loan.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard.
It's a challenge. It creates a challenge. So there, there are ways to, to word it that we can work with you to help, um, offset some of the risk. And the CWSRF program actually, as of this past year, updated some of the language that, that's allowed. Uh, for municipalities, because that is a, it's, it's enormously hard. Yeah, it's challenging.
And, and we've been escalating like the, the, the numbers, you know, out so that it's not, I mean, those dollars that we're telling you. That's, the number we're going to have you bond is like at bid time. It's, it's extended out. So about the best we can do.
Oh, I'm not blaming.
No, I know, but it's, yeah, it's tricky.
It creates a major challenge. If you get it's back that are above what the town bonded for, with the, with the public had approved, that that's a challenge. So we recognize that, want to work to make sure you have a dollar that's going to keep you safe.
I had an option. This, the, the new plan looks obviously like it includes a lot more efficiencies and, and necessary upgrades. Does it also, and I'm sorry to say this, does it also increase our capacity for development?
So the, the upgrade does not increase your permitted flow. That is, that is something that you can pursue, but that is a challenge. Um, getting it permitted to have an increase in flow. It's generally, um, challenged by environmental groups.
Okay.
So it is possible.
Do it with this design, but you're saying it would.
I'm saying it's possible to get an increase for your, for, of capacity. But this proposal is for your permitted capacity. It's not, and no change to your permitted capacity. So your, your original design, your permitted capacity is point four five MGD. Your proposed design flow is still point four five. You're operating at fifty percent right now. So that. So you have plant capacity right now. And I know we've talked a little bit about giving you some numbers about where that, that puts you.
Yeah, you might, I think an email we had to potentially inspire more units, I think, was the vote we gave, uh, with the new plant. Uh, but can you talk maybe if the board or the town came back and said, we want to be able to add. Permit aside, what would be the, I think, you have an estimated cost, we'll hold to you, but what would be the increase cost? So the people at watching in the room, there's going to be a question of, this is a thirty-year plant. Why are we not trying to add two thousand more units?
Right.
So what we, if.
If, if we wanted to that, so I would, so capacity is tankage, right? So the more, the more flow you're going to add to this plant, the larger those tanks have to be. And I'm talking about mostly the aeration tanks. If we were to expand, um, if you were to get an increase in your capacity for the plant, you would definitely be into a third clarifier. That clarifier is probably, I'm just going to throw up, like, a million and a half. Thank for a new clarifier. Um, those tanks are going to have to get wider, longer. Um, it might, at that point, you might want to go back and look at some other. Um, treatment processes. For example, like an, a sequencing batch reactor, which we just. Designed and built in South Woodstock. That might be a better, um, a better technology, a better process for. Where, you know, where you're at now at fifty percent and to be able to ramp that up to the flows that you want to see.
Okay.
You know?
So those work in like modules where you keep adding on to it?
So we could, we could, if that's, if that's a direction that the town is looking to, like we, we think in, you know, thirty years. We want to add a thousand more units. We can also, you know, keep, keep real estate. For adding, say, a third train to those tanks.
Right.
You know, like a whole nother, a whole nother set, a third clarifier, room for a filtration building with, you know. With the ability to pass that kind of hydraulic flow. But that would be something that I would encourage. You to think about to project out kind of like a, kind of like a fifty.
Yeah.
You know, like a, like a master plan for wastewater. Um, so that you're investing smartly in this upgrade that can be then phased for a future upgrade. If and when needed.
So while you have your financial crystal ball out, um, I guess I'm concerned that we're, you know, again with the timing. Bond vote in November and then in twenty twenty-five, we may get news that requires us building this third tertiary process building. Um, so do you have an idea of what that cost would be and?
I'm going to say a tertiary building with filtrations is about two million dollars. And I'm throwing big numbers out.
No, I, I know. A ballpark is.
I wonder if that could be included in the bond for the future.
It could be.
Yeah, so, so you bond out.
What I, what I would do, and I've designed it this way, is a building that houses the filters and the UV. It's all inside and you flow straight from the filtration into the UV, um, channel. And then it could also have a, a, a room on the side for chemical addition. That's, that's what I would like. I mean, if I had my.
Yeah, if you had your.
My artistic.
I think to what you said, Kirsten, I think the key is to, if you're at half your capacity now, the. And you're projecting growth to have flexibility. And the, the good thing is your site does have space. You know, some of the sites, well, South Woods is a really tight space, but this, this has more room. So if things are, if. As we're going through the preliminary design, that Kirsten is going to lay it out for that extra train on the aeration tanks. That's a good, it's a good thought. Like that allows you room for growth in future, but you, you would want to go through that permitting process first. To make sure that, you know, before you invest this, this large investment. Build the five hundred units, get yourself near to capacity before you start.
So why I want to stress that that's a permitting nightmare is that. You're not just increasing your flows. The state's going to look at the receiving waters and what its ability to accept pollutants. So if you have, you have a nitrogen loading to the Otto Queche and it's dictated by the Connecticut River. The Long Island Sound, TMDL for nitrogen, a whole connect, any, anybody that discharges close to the Connecticut has a nitrogen limit. And it's a, it's a loading, it's amount of pounds. You're only allowed so many pounds. So what that means is if you're increasing your flow, you've got to treat to lower limits. And treating nitrogen to lower limits in cold climates means bigger tanks.
Got it.
Okay, so it's like, it's a, it's a more advanced process than what you have now. Um, so that's, a- a- and the state would come in and say, okay, well, you're only allowed to discharge this many pounds of. Um, biological oxygen demand, this many pounds of total suspended solids, this many pounds of nitrogen, this many pounds of phosphorus. So your treatment would have to, they're not going to let you discharge more of them. They're going to just require that you treat to a, um, same amount of pounds, but concentration will have to get lowered. You have to treat to higher standards. So, yeah.
So there's a, a chance where this could be built or renovated kind of as is planned for the most part. But the option for more construction for more kind of growth could happen separately in the future. Sorry, I have more questions on this. I don't know. Carrie, do you have a question?
No.
I have one.
Yeah.
Is it going to look any different than it does now?
On the outside.
Yeah.
Do you not like the way it looks?
I'm fine with it. Somebody's going to complain. Southwood stocks are a problem.
I understand that.
I just thought I'd give one step.
About this site, it is tucked down. It's not, it's not terribly.
Absolutely.
It's not terribly.
It's kind of a joke in a way, but somebody's going to mention it.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea.
I'm sorry, Roger, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have like a couple of technical questions. Um. It looks like a lot of this, this, um, scoping is for this peak flow, if I'm not misunderstanding or, or. So what causes that peak flow?
What causes that is infiltration and influence your collection system. So when you have rain events, flows spike.
So that goes into the storm drains.
You do not have a combined system. You have, it's direct, um, infiltration. That's manhole or it's direct, there could be a connection somewhere from, they, it's not like a roof, a roof drain from a, from a building. Is connected into the sewer or it's connected to a thumb pump in someone's basement that then discharges to the sewer.
Is there any way to mitigate that? Because those are huge peaks. I mean, those, you know, you're going from, from a, a capacity line to like. Five times the capacity line, if I'm reading the chart right.
Um, that's what a robust, uh, sewer use ordinance and enforcement can mitigate. That's.
Okay.
That's the town ordinance and then enforcing that ordinance.
Right, right, right. You need the enforcement.
Um, we have done for other, for other municipalities where you do smoke testing of a sewer, you know, and you start seeing smoke coming. Into someone's home, or, you know, on the gutters and you're like, oh, there's a direct connection there that goes into your, into your sewer lines. Those are things that you could, you could perform to try to find them. In our experience, um, that solves some of the problems. Or all of it. Many, many communities around the state have these issues with aging infrastructure, with aging collection systems. They crack, the old ones were asbestos cement, uh, cement pipes. Um, they crack, there's the bricks at the top of the. The manhole that holds the, the ring in the road, you know, they shift, they move.
So one way or the other, water is infiltrating the system at a, at a tremendous rate. Okay. Um, and the other question, a technical question is about the sledge holding tanks. What happens to that sledge after we're finished holding it?
So it gets dewatered with, uh, what that means is, um, Paul Sanzak is a contractor. He comes in with a large piece of equipment. He spins it, he sucks, spins the water out of it, you know, and, um, he then takes what we call a. Sledge cave dryer, about, uh, twenty-five percent solid. It's a dryer. And then he has to go dispose of it.
Okay.
Or landfill, um, some, some communities started up in Quebec, um, some, I mean, they struck it.
Nice of us.
Uh, there's a landfill in Quebec, there's, um, there is a, uh, resource management in, in New Hampshire, which uses bio solids. From different facilities around the state. They turn it into, um, topsoil.
Okay, but somehow whether it's taken away and hopefully disposed of or, or maybe even used in a.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
That's actually one of probably the largest, um, operational costs for the.
Taking it away.
Is the contracting of dewatering it and disposing of it. That is probably the largest.
Okay.
Item budget.
Does the current cost include, uh, remediation, not remediation, but like, uh, I guess careful disposal of the. Asbestos and other elements we talked about?
Um, it would include.
Okay.
We haven't found that that is usually a, a high ticket.
Okay.
Item, but, um, we would do a lead and asbestos survey that's required by the state of Vermont for funding, for public funding.
Okay.
And, um, it would identify any materials. Um, usually asbestos is in ceiling tile or floor tile. Um, it would identify those, um, so that we can inform the contractor, you have to dispose of this a certain way. And there are, there are landfills that accept.
Are there any questions on anyone on Zoom? Uh, Wendy.
Wendy.
Question. Wendy, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Wendy Marinin Village, uh, thank you, this is a very helpful, clear presentation. Um, my question is, is there a way to estimate, uh, maybe by percentage, how much the cost, the operating cost of the upgraded plant will increase? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, it's not a analysis I have done at this point, um, to, um, I have not, let me just say, I have not done that analysis. Um, if anything, the efficient, energy efficiencies should not increase the electrical demand on the plant. Um, it should make it more favorable, like it'll, it'll decrease the horsepower sizes of the different, um, pumps and blowers. So, um, it's probably gonna be about net even with energy costs. Um, I'm saying that, don't hold me to it, um, but that's, um, that is one thing. Chemical costs will go down, except for, cause we're switching from a chemical disinfection to ultraviolet disinfection, but with that is energy usage associated with the lamps. Um, so there's, there's a, there's a difference there, but, um, and if we're getting into phosphorus removal, we will have new chemicals that will be required, um, and those, those, that has an annual cost as well. Uh, so the answer, the short answer is no, I do not have that estimate. That is something that we would do in final design, so that you can look at your, um, user rates to see if they're appropriate.
Thank you.
Um, so if there are no other questions, what's the next step here? What is the, the board need to do with, with those ten, the next steps? Good, good question, so, yeah, uh, you and I were working, or, we talked about, I, I need to prepare an engineering service agreement for the next step of public outreach, funding assistance, trying to help coordinate that, and then, uh, getting into the, uh, final design starting in November. But like I said, there are some things that you wanna do this summer in preparation, so you can roll right in. Um, and that would go through the ZWSF process, so that takes a little bit of time, the first step is us to draft it up. I would run it through you, we would submit it into the DEC, their Water Investment Division. They do a review, that looks good, then we can prepare the loan application, uh, for step two, final design, which could include all of these services I just mentioned. And then that way you have a favorable loan in place to keep the design moving. Uh, that can be done prior to the bond, that's part of, part of the services you get is help to get, make sure that you get public outreach for the bond. Uh, so that would be the next step, and then we would talk about giving this, like, board a schedule, what they would expect to see in milestones over two thousand.
Um, I have one last question about the sludge, are there other, are there other options? I guess, like, alternatives for, for us specifically in Woodstock, in terms of not disposing of the sludge and, and taking the water out?
No. So, I know, I, I, This is a statewide, this is actually a regional wide issue.
Okay.
Of sludge, final disposal for sludge, um, as we see, um, the state and the region grappling with PFOS concerns.
Yeah.
In dewatered sludge, um, where, how is it going to be disposed? It is a, again, it's a regional issue. Um, right now, Woodstock does not have to dewater its own sludge, which is energy intensive and would require another full-time operator.
Okay.
To do, so the, um, the mode, the mode of operation right now is to bring in someone else to do that and pay that cost. Could there be some savings down the road if you had, um, if you wanted to invest in more personnel there and have a full-time person dealing with the sludge? Sure, do you have the land for it? I think you do, however, I would change the way it's digested. So right now you have raw sludge that's B, it's a class B product, it doesn't meet certain requirements. Um, there are different communities, say like the, the city of South Burlington, which digests their sludge and gets it to what they call a class A biosolids, so it meets different requirements from the EPA for time and temperature, reduction of certain vectors, so it's not, it's, there's pathogen reduction.
Yeah.
It heats it to a certain, a certain level. Different communities, there's a couple of communities around the state, Brattleboro, um, I believe Montpelier, um, Middlebury's looking at digestion.
Okay.
Anoramic digestion, those are pretty big infrastructure. Uh, you don't have really the, the real estate to put in a digester, so to speak, for that. And that is, that's energy intensive, um, it's a lot of, you know, you have to heat the sludge to a certain level. I see where, again, crystal ball, the state, the area where we should be heading into is regional digestion of sludge and incineration or drying to, which can, um, destroy PFAS, but it, it needs to happen at a regional level because the, the cost benefit is just not there for individual communities.
Yeah.
And it would make sense at a more regional, but that's, that's, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
And neither is New Hampshire or Maine, so.
The facilities that now take the sludge and dispose of them, do you see them in the next ten years? Like, being at capacity for their ability to handle sludge?
You mean like the landfills?
Yeah.
Y- yes.
Okay.
There is, and, and it, you know what, yeah, so. It's, it's keeping, it's keeping the state regulators up at night.
Okay.
They're not sure what the solution is gonna be.
Yeah.
The board, uh, with Canada closed for a period.
Closed for a period of time, it might, back in, it might open back up. Um, the facilities that reuse the biosolids for beneficial reuse, like they've turned it into, um, E-Trans has a spec, what do they call that? It's a transportation topsoil, you can use it on a, on a, on a road project.
Okay.
You know, things like that, the manufactured topsoil, that's the name of it. Um, they won't accept your sludge if it has PFOS in it.
Yeah.
So there's a level of testing, um, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
I wish, I wish I could give you, like,
No, I'm just curious if we're gonna keep making sludge, like, at some point, you, we're gonna run out of space to put, yeah, so like, do we need to be thinking even broader about what we do with the sludge, or?
Every treatment plant in the state of Vermont produces sludge, the only ones that don't have are lagoons, and it sits in there for twenty, thirty years.
It still produces it.
Still produces it.
Pulled out as well.
Doesn't get pulled out, and then when they do need to pull it out, we're talking a couple million dollars.
Yeah.
To remove that sludge, so it's a, it's a, it's a cost you have annually, or it's a cost you have? Every twenty years, yeah.
Sorry, I just have one more question, um, this may be goofy.
Um, but I know that places like Burlington are testing the wastewater for, for pathogens. Does, do we, is there anything that needs to be done to make that possible here? So say we wanted to look for COVID spikes or whatever.
Um, I believe, I'm not sure if they're doing that with the state of Vermont, um, the health department, or if they're doing that with your UDM. But yes, they, they've been tracking COVID outbreaks through testing at certain different parts of the city.
So is there anything about the design that needs to change to be able to do that?
They, they're, they're, they're doing inflection systems, no.
So they just got it downstream, okay. Upstream, okay.
So they can tell, like, oh, the, the new north end.
Okay.
Viking or the south end, or something like that, uh, i- i- it's not at the treatment plant.
Okay.
But, um, to that point, it's not a goofy question, sampling happens at the influence of a plant. Um, there, they have a composite sampler, they sample for, um, they don't sample for pathogens, but they're sampling for, um, biological oxygen demand, the temperature, the pH, the total suspended solids, the nitrogen, phosphorus at the beginning, and then they have a composite sampler at the end, so that they can show their compliance with their discharge permit.
Alright, that makes sense, great, thanks.
Okay, that's it, yeah, that's it, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the liquor license for the Woodstock farmers market.
My favorite thing.
Yeah.
So as always, uh, this board has made frustrations clear in the state on how this is being handled currently. Without really information on the select boards, I think in the past, the board has voted in favor of these, with the assumption that the state is doing the diligence on their end, um, so, it's not the same situation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license patients, um, with the proviso that we assume the state is doing their job.
Is there a second?
All second.
One second, all in favor?
Second. Aye.
All aye. Aye. Hey. The EDC. Anyone on?
Not look like it's over. We just, people excellent, that's, that's not. So at a recent meeting, uh, the board voted to, well, just a couple of thousand dollars out for funds to, uh, pay off the Carlton Hill Road project. Uh, there's approximately forty-six thousand dollars left to be allocated. Mark Hunter, uh, has given me a list of different, uh, things around town, uh, that could be, could be fixed, uh, also based on information from the chair, I went to the fire department, uh, their recommendations. Chief David Green, um, has a quote for approximately nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, which is to install a new electric cable line, uh, in South Woodstock. It is where, um, the police and fire radios are at that site. It is fifty years old, it's a drift berry in the ground. It's on, uh, a landowner's property, um, and they asked if it could be installed, um, differently. Um, so this would be, uh, about twenty thousand dollars to kinda go up there and, uh, fix it. So it would be, uh, new and continue to work and give out radio coverage to the fire police up in South Woodstock. Um, so I have one copy, if you guys wanna take a look at that. Again, it does not have to be voted on tonight, if the board does not want to, option, uh,
What about a cell tower up there?
It's all cell tower, you mean?
Yeah.
That's an option we could potentially look at.
I don't wanna look at it, but. It's right above my house.
Exactly.
We need cell coverage. I don't want any microwaves coming down to me, but would the power line be big enough to sustain something, or is that's a different hole, another hole?
That's beyond my, uh, intelligence at the moment, I, I can look into it.
What did we approve in South Woodstock before? Didn't we approve some kind of?
We upgraded the, um, fan that is, repeated.
Okay.
And it's, well, once more, I can have Chief Green type up something more depth, uh, I think we're at a pretty good place, only a couple forty-seven dollars left.
So it's just upgrading the power line that's, that's, that's there, or moving it?
It's moving it, yeah, so it's fifty years old, I believe it's buried under the ground.
Yeah.
And it's a way to, it's so.
It's on somebody's private property.
Yeah.
And we, and we pay them to allow that to be there.
And we'd have to, and, and this.
Still gonna be on the private property.
Right, but this is gonna put it conduit, instead of having a drift berry, which is a big difference, yeah.
And we put this on the agenda for, can't come on two of the points, and, um, we're still working on figuring out how much we had to allocate the AIPAC. So at that point, we have a solid number, we might be able to allocate the rest of the money some rounds too.
It may be, it may be worthwhile looking if the, if the electrical with a, uh, up with a, uh, cellphone.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a good spot for it, but there was, back when Phil was involved, there was talk about that.
A cell tower up there?
What are the other things that mark out?
Uh, it's, sorry, infrastructure, it's culverts, uh, some repairs, um, my suggestion would be, if the board was gonna approve something like this, uh, it could then improve the rest of the money just for, uh, infrastructure, a little risk. Uh, what's been marketed back, choose where you want to allocate the rest of the funds.
I'd like to see what it would, what the extra, what, if the extra electric would, what the cost would be.
Oh, you mean with cell tower, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it makes, you know, if, if it, we can do that, it would make sense.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Does this solves part of the problem with the police not having coverage in the village, South Woodstock?
I'm not sure if it will.
It's not making anything with that, it's just updating what's there.
And now, there could be some knock-on effects, but the purpose of it's not to increase, it's to keep always satisfied.
Yep.
Go find with everybody?
No, but that, and as we move on, if you're on Monday here, we did, um, the week, discussion number seven on the on-prem restaurants, that, that won't be discussed tonight, if anyone's waiting for that, that's not gonna happen tonight. Uh, we don't have an update ready.
Okay, discussions, um, report tell us.
The town meeting is coming up, and I believe the, uh, select board always kinda discuss what they want on the cover, potentially, so, uh, Nikki, or who charge of, I'm sorry, um, Nikki Levaticus, um,
Congrats, Nikki.
Um, who puts it to the town report, did they know if the select board has, uh, opinion on what they want the pitch to be this year on the cover of the town report or not?
How about you, Eric?
Me, me and Roger, how about that?
That goes out to a bug though. You don't have a choice.
Uh.
I haven't given any thought.
What about the stars? Picture the star.
Southwoodstock. That's, that works too.
You just make it just.
Person only told me to report that, I guess they run out of town after that.
The star is a good idea, I guess.
I don't, I'm just thinking it's.
Yeah, with all Rotary's efforts and everything to.
Yeah.
Do the star.
Work on that, if we have, need more guidance, we'll come back and ask.
Could have AI generate it.
I'm sure they've got plenty of pictures, somebody does. I'll put the cross.
I think it should be a bottle of the FEMA water.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright.
Sort.
Um, so as we discussed in, uh, good time with Taylor Turner there, there was a discussion about the current sewer ordinance. I would state, um, that all expenses, uh, sewer had to be taken on by the users. With the conversation the board had, uh, last meeting, I went to all layers of that language, um, and they actually came back. Um, and the way they read our ordinance, and also, uh, the state statutes, uh, twenty-four VSA three six one three, and twenty-four VSA three six one five A four, um, and our sewer ordinance in article, uh, four dot, that three, uh, that we do not need to amend the ordinance, that that ordinance, um, gives the select board with their statute of authority, to allocate expenses among users and non-users. Uh, so it's their guidance that if the board going forward wanted to have any sewer expense, bond or no bond, be allocated between users and non-users, uh, you already have the authority to do that based on their reading of the ordinance, so no chain shortage needs to happen. Um, if, to have all the possibilities available to the board as.
Can I, sorry, um, just to mirror back what you're saying, so the, the ordinance that we had, they're saying is fine as long as, if we wanna change it, because we had proposed changing the language.
No, so you don't need to change anything, the, the ordinance as written gives you the power to allocate funds, allocate expenses any way the board sees fit, so as it's currently written, you could come out and make an ordinance tomorrow saying that all sewer, sewer expenses have to be paid by non-sewer users, if you wanted to.
Okay.
Uh, that gives you the power, uh, as very right.
Were there other things, the ordinance? Were there other things in the ordinance? I thought there were other things in the ordinance that we wanted to update.
We don't have to.
We don't have to, nothing.
Uh, the only thing they added that that we want to do is. In that same ordinance. Add in a phrase accepts, except what's enumerated, which means. You could read the ordinance currently that. User fees could be used for anything, i.e. a new police vehicle to pay my salary or something else. And they recommended updating that, so it would only be sewer related stuff.
Okay.
The ordinance also does, you know, it. Recites how you get your permits and everything like that, and that's all obsolete.
Yeah.
The permits, even for people on town sewer, if they want to add a bedroom, it's a town, it's a state permit now, it's no longer a town permit. So our our ordinance is antiquated in that regard.
And I, I think this is an issue throughout the town and village, the order to have it updated. Probably decades, so I think.
So we should update it anyway to include the updates to the process.
Yeah, so I think we should go through and.
Okay.
Updates in.
So if we're gonna change it, then change the.
Yeah.
Okay.
On all update.
I think everybody knows William at this point. That's good news, that that the ordinance gives us that flexibility. I still think for a November bond vote, that's gonna come a lot sooner than we think, we should start. I don't know if it means forming a committee to discuss how costs are allocated. Hopefully a small committee. That doesn't squabble too much, or whether that's something that that you would prefer to do as a board. To come up with with. With whatever kind of formula you can come up with and the justification for that, and then. There's a huge public. A huge public. Education. That's gonna have to happen, and because nobody's gonna be happy with it, because everybody is gonna pay. But, and I think, I mean, these guys did a great job of putting it all in very user friendly terms, so I mean, I understood. Ninety seven percent of what they were saying. So, but I think, you know, I think it's relatively soon, you should come up with a method. For coming up with how are you gonna allocate costs and how to communicate that to the the public.
Thank you.
On all update.
Okay, I'll go that. So if you guys recall, in December, we voted to. Create a working group made up of Eric, Ray and myself to explore options when it comes to town hall. And beyond, and so we met last week. And right now we are in the information collection stage. Of assembling some information so that we can better refine the criteria that we outlined in that meeting. Specifically as it relates to what we consider financially affordable. And we will meet again before the next February meeting, and I hope to have some really great. Action items and updates for that, we all have action items that we're working on for that. Meeting, so. Great, I will send emails to remind everybody of their action items.
I didn't get them.
I thought we'd get them all to you, but.
So it was a productive meeting, we're moving, moving ahead, forging forward, and I will be excited to have more information to share at the February meeting.
Town meeting prep.
Two things we wanted to discuss was the one percent sales tax and then also the informational session. So I got. Back from a lawyers today that. I was asked to look into if the village had the ability to opt out if the town passed it based on. Research from our lawyers, they're unable to do that, so if the town passed one percent sales tax, it would. Be in place for the entire town. I know one information, we are still looking, and Laura is doing most of the work into how the online. Sales tax would work and what that could look like, so we don't have definite answer yet, but she's working towards that. And then I think the board talked about potentially having the informational session, not that Saturday right before. Australian ballot, but the Saturday for that to give people extra time if they wanted to. Send in the ballots, you know, did the mail, they'd have a week and a half to have it received by town instead of less. So I believe the state law stipulates it has to be ten days before Australian ballots. I think that Saturday is the tenth day, so if it's the board's desire to do that, I'll just confirm with the LCT that. That is appropriate, and if so, we can go forward with that.
The twenty fourth of February is the one we're looking at, I believe.
Right.
It's the. Yeah, I looked, Pomfords also having their information on that day, so I would assume it's fine, but I think you should still check.
Works for me.
Eric, can I bring up the? The nonprofit articles?
Yeah, Brett, what do you want?
Okay, so one thing that I've always thought is that people should get more information about the special articles and the nonprofits that are asking. Us to vote to give them money, and I, I, I think people understand that that, you know, we've. Our budget sets a tax rate and every one of those petitions. That gets approved is gonna going to increase that tax rate, and we all know that we have some nonprofits in this town that do tremendous work and deserve. That money, I, I'm not sure about others because they don't come on the Saturday meeting, they don't make presentations. So my proposal was to ask just four or five questions of each. Nonprofit that's going to be on the ballot. And I believe the standard would, if they keep them short or they're giving, they're given editing approval, and I know we have some people from the standard here. But I think that they would agree to print those, you know, possibly we also put them on the list serve just to give people. More information when they go to the polls about the nonprofits they're voting for.
Good idea.
Great idea.
Okay.
Other questions?
I had a few questions, I don't know where they are. Let me see if I can find them.
I think the more information we can give the voters, the. Better outcomes we can hope to have.
Here we go. And these are, I mean, I just did this quickly, so if anyone has any other ideas, and I, I had a heading that please note. They may be published in the standard in the list serve, so keep your answers brief, otherwise they might be edited. Describe your organization's mission, how many Woodstock residents are either employed by or volunteer with your organization? Describe your work specifically in the Woodstock community, and how will the money being requested be used in Woodstock? So I have.
Yeah, I think my only maybe consideration or addition would be if they are also receiving funds from the budget. I don't know if anyone else has a feeling on that.
Yeah, because a lot of people don't know, I think that's a good question.
Okay.
Action.
Roger, anything else you're dying to know?
Um, I'd like. To see the number of people served directly by that organization as opposed to indirectly. And if they have any additional revenue sources. That they could be tapping.
Thank you.
We'll work on those.
Conflict of interest.
Petitions are due Thursday, so we'll know. Who's taking out petitions at that point, okay.
So an update on the conflict of policy, a while ago, there was a joint meeting by the select board and the trustees. Asked to update the conflict of interest policy. To kind of. State that if you worked for the municipality, you couldn't run for elected office and vice versa. I ran that by lawyers. And they strongly advised, we do not include that as it infringes on people's freedom to run for elected office in the States. And they thought that. It's up to the voters to make that determination in the ballot box, not for officials to do that, and that. There would be a potential that we could be sued if we made that law and someone wanted to challenge it. So that's kind of good updates, I let the trustees know, and they kind of agreed to. But the contact interest policy remain as is, no any updates. So I wanted to give that update to the select board as well today.
Can I make a suggestion or request then if we're not gonna update the policy, and maybe, maybe I can. Talk to Nikki about this, but maybe we have a yearly. Training on conflict of interest and and recusal and and how recusal happens from decision. If we can't, yeah, we can achieve that from the conflict of interest policy, I think maybe it's worth a refresher for all of our boards and committees.
That's a great idea, I think we've talked before about. After town meeting and village meeting day when there potentially are new boards or new chairs, vice chairs to kind of have a. A refresh of what that is gonna look like for the board and maybe have a conflict of interest. Information session at the time would be very useful.
Calendar of events.
Uh, so finally talked about this again a few times, so we just wanna kind of get this off and the brown running of having at least one board member not too good together and kind of sketch out. Kind of what the years will look like when things will be discussed, and so. A, the board has a plan to work off of, but also the public has that knowledge as well, so. Sometimes it won't be as rushed, current things on the agenda, people not knowing what things are gonna be discussed. I think a great example is the Quill Tanner and the main wastewater plant. If we go forward with all this stuff, I have an outline of how things are gonna happen throughout the year, could benefit us and also the public. So I just wanna see if we can get that ball rolling as well, against hopefully by at least March after town meeting, kind of have a outline of what the year looks like for the board. If anyone wants to. Tackle that with me, I'm happy to work with whoever, perfect, Susan.
Everyone's looking at me, so. Because I keep bringing this up.
No, I think it's great.
No, it's great.
That's fine.
Yeah. I think it's a great tap.
Other business.
Oh, this is me again?
Yeah.
Yes. So I'll give some more context.
He has her. As well.
What are your mutes?
Oh, thank you, thank you, I was saying, okay. Thank you, Eric, for bringing this up, that my question, I thought it was for the town meeting, but it's really about the calendar. My sense is that voters will be asked to make decisions that impact. Taxes. Several times this year. For example, what I've been hearing, certainly we have our budget vote. And we will also be asked to vote on the school. Proposal at. At the Australian ballot in March, but what I've also heard is that now we have the ballot. The bond vote potentially in November for the sewer treatment plant. We, we know that there's a discussion coming forward about the wastewater, I mean, the water company, but we don't know how we're gonna. Have what it's gonna cost and what it's the impact, and then the town hall discussion, I recall, was. Tabled to be put in front of voters. In November, so my question is, is that true, we're spreading out decisions, but how, how can we vote in? How can we vote on anything without the looming future of other expenses is my concern? Although I appreciate separating everything, you know, it's a tough one, I know it's tough.
So I, I think the goal of separating them has been to have the votes when the board and the public has all of her information relevant to make that decision.
Well, I agree, yeah, that's good.
And also just if we take a bond vote in say November, does not mean that we'll we'll go for the money the next day. It could not be for six months or seven months, depending on, you know, what's what is required, so I think you heard tonight that. With the wastewater plants, just to go into the process of getting potential grants and loans, you have to have the bond vote first. It doesn't mean you have to go out and get that money right away, when it comes to things like. The Woodstock Aqueduct or Town Hall, those decisions have not been made yet by the board to pursue or not to pursue. So there are always gonna be things fluid in the future. I think we've all talked about since I've been here at least of some deferred maintenance in Woodstock and. The consequences of that, and this is one of the things we are facing, a lot of things coming at us at once, I think. As we went through the budget book or the budget for the next year, we're very cautious of not adding. Any new things in the budget we didn't need to, under the assumption of trying to keep the tax rate as low as possible for residents, knowing what was coming. But at the end of the day, some of the things need to happen, and you know, unfortunately, it's gonna be a burden on us. But the goal is try to do in a way that minimizes increases for everyone as best as possible.
Thank you for explaining that, my, my, my concern slash suggestion is that. This kind of question be addressed at the informational meeting so that people aren't frozen at the ballot. On, in other words, anxious about, so anxious about the future, we can't decide about. What's in front of us, if there's a way to take what you just said and map it out a little, that's, that would be super helpful. At the information meeting, just an outline, like you just said. That was helpful, and then a sub-question to that point is. Oh, shoot, now I've. Oh, shoot, I forgot the secondary, I'm sorry. But you, you hear what I'm saying, that the, that the.
The context is important.
Oh, I know what my sub, my sub is, also at the information meeting, if you could highlight. What is in fact, what has been set aside in capital reserves. For some of this, which I believe we've done a little bit recently. I may be mistaken, but if, if the voters could have that highlighted to them at the information center, that's also a calming note.
That's great feedback, Wendy.
Great, thank you, thank you for listening, thanks.
Okay, alright, I'm back. So for context. The planning commission, as we discussed, is down to voting members, we've had two applications, one of them has been withdrawn, Matt was just approved. We have a provision in our bylaw to, that actually encourages a select board member to be an ex officio. Non-voting member of the planning commission, and I am coming to the board today to ask for that appointment. For myself, so that I could continue to serve on the planning commission, but as a non-voting member. And I'm happy to bring up the statute if you want to see it.
Can, I have a question for it, Susan.
Yeah, no, my, my question is just having discussed conflict of interest, what happens when this board is then discussed, was that your question?
It was, yeah.
Okay. What happens when this board is then discussing something that was discussed, planning commission level?
So it's my understanding from Stephen that that wouldn't be a conflict of interest because it's inherent in the by, like the bylaw actually requests a board member be a part of. The commission and the planning process, if that makes sense, I'm happy to get further clarity on it.
Because you want to be voted on.
I wouldn't be voting.
Yeah.
I would be a member.
So anything that comes to the planning commission. Laura may have been involved in the creation of the policy or shepherding through certain things, but the final votes, she would not participate in, so therefore. She wouldn't have a recommendation one way or the other, I think is the way they're looking at, but we can look into clarification on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we should.
Okay, I mean, I think, because I, I, I know you've done just a ton of work on the planning commission, which we're all very thankful for. And my guess is that that might not end, and so even if you haven't voted on something, if you drafted something, it just is kind of uncomfortable at this level.
Yeah.
So that's just my only.
No, I think it's a great suggestion. We can.
So I guess we could. Table this for next meeting, where we could vote to see if they will want to vote U B X Fisher and then see what guidance is from lawyers.
I'd be, I, I'm, it seems like everybody's more comfortable with getting clarity, and so I think we should wait until we have clarity.
You can still go.
Yeah, still planning to go to the meetings.
Go to as many meetings as you want to go to.
Hey, approval of the minute.
Because I know you have one update.
Now, the December eighteenth minutes, when it comes to discussion, the. It's D. Three, four and five, the sewer budget. It talks about that Phil gave the. Suggested implementing a smaller increase now instead of a larger. Suggested implementing a smaller increase now instead of a larger one later, and I don't think that was accurate, I think that Jill was saying. I think Jill advocated that we increase the sewer fee to pay for summer all of the work at Brayside. And so that, you know, there wouldn't be, we wouldn't be drawing on capital that maybe we could apply to reduce sewer fee in the future. And then I think we also voted on that, which changed the budget, is that, am I remembering that right?
Yeah, so I had the budget kind of up, and we were talking about it as we went through, so I made the changes based on select board's guidance, that, um.
So I just think that the minutes should reflect that, because it presently says that, um. We approved the sewer budget as proposed, but we don't say that we changed the budget.
Including the changes made.
Yeah, and I think we should reflect what the change was, from what was first presented.
So we're having to make that change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, so I would move that we approve the other minutes, so December fifth, December thirteenth. And not approve December eighteenth till it's changed.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that brings to the end of our meeting. Your motion for adjourn?
I'm moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Aye.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.